Good evening. This Board of Selectmen meeting in the Town of Adams on Wednesday, June 17th, 2020, is now in session. Before we get started, as we have started other remote meetings, I would like to just remind people that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by tuning into Channel 1303, thank you to our friends at Northern Berkshire Community Television, or by calling 929-436-2866 with a meeting ID number of 912-2657-2387 and a password of 559529. If I've read those numbers quickly, please note that that information is posted on the town's website, as with all of our meeting agendas. And despite our best efforts, if we're not able to provide for real-time access, a recording of this meeting will be posted on nbcpc.org as soon as they're able. It is also available by request. We do have a number of people on the call. I would like to just take attendance for our record, so I will need a first and last name from each of you. If you could unmute yourself and state your name, I would appreciate it. Kathy Foster, thank you very much.
Haley Mezwar.
Thank you, Haley.
Ed St. John.
Thank you, Ed. Lou Moser, you still there?
I am. Lou Moser, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I have, I believe it's Donna Malloy and Travis. Travis, I still need a last name. If you guys could put that in the chat function, I would appreciate it, and we will conclude it with our attendance for this evening. With all of that, if anybody else should enter the room, I will let you know. Here, present in the room are the five members of the Board of Selectmen: Town Administrator Jay Green, Administrative Assistant Deb Dunlap, Community Development Director Donna Seaton, Peter Genthouse from Northern Berkshire Community Television, and Jeff Newman from iberkshers.com, just so that those who are on the call are aware of who's in the room and we are aware of who's in the virtual room. With all of that, I will now ask for everyone to please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. The first item of business is the approval of minutes for May 14th and May 20th. It is my understanding that all members of the board are able to vote on the minutes. What is the board's pleasure?
Mayor and Chair, make a motion. We wait to read the minutes in the boardroom.
Okay, I have a motion by Jim. So, a second.
I'll start.
A second by John. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? All right, that is unanimous. We do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:10 PM, so that gives us six minutes. I will go right into public comment. There are two more people looking to get into the room, so hold on one moment. I have Angela Costa, C-O-S-T-A, joining the room, and I will need a name for inspector. So while that's happening, the others who are on the call, if there's anybody who wishes to address the Board of Selectmen this evening under public comment, now is the time to unmute yourself and speak to the board. I have two other people joining. I have a Nathan. Everyone's not coming through. Is that her?
Uh huh.
Hi there. Nathan, can you provide me with a last name?
Sorry, this is Mike Wondry.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Just needed your name for the attendance purposes. Appreciate that. I gotta tell him not to be here because he can hear. Mike, I'm gonna ask you to mute yourself if you could.
You got it.
Okay, thank you. Unless you were looking to speak to the board under public comment.
I was not.
Okay. I apologize if this is rather cumbersome. We have a lot of interest in tonight's meeting. Maybe it's the public hearing. The person who is signed on as inspector, if you could give me your first and last name. We might be sending all of public comment doing this. We might go right up to the speakers.
There we go.
Who's that?
Jerry.
Hi, Jerry. Thank you very much.
How you doing?
You might want to mute yourself.
Want to mute?
Yeah, we're looking for it.
Okay, there you go.
For everybody that doesn't know who Jerry is.
Okay.
For everybody that doesn't know who Jerry is.
I thought you said Gardner, did he?
I believe that's our Jerry, yes.
Okay.
Jerry Gardner.
Now I have a face and now I recognize Officer Cunningham.
Hello.
Hello there. Travis, we are under public comment. Did you wish to speak to the Board of Selectmen? Or if not, you can go ahead and mute yourself until another time, but... Okay. I guess there's nobody wishing to speak to the Board of Selectmen under public comment. I have 7:09. Can we start the public hearing? I might just leave it open then, because I think the approval of the annual appointments is going to take a little bit longer than one minute.
So what's our public meeting about?
Our public hearing. We have Donna Seaton here this evening to talk to us, to give us a status review of the activities involving the improvements to Adams Memorial, right? Did I have that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and we'll go through all of that with us. It's so nice to keep so many people on the call.
Madam Chair, I'd like a motion to go into public hearing to discuss FY 2020 Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing in regards to a status review of the proposed activities involving improvement to a portion of the Adams Memorial School Building.
I have a motion by John.
I'll start.
I have a second by Rick. This is to go into public hearing. Do I need a vote call? No, I just... All in favor going into public hearing?
I agree.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we're in a public hearing. I apologize. Donna, would you like to address the board? There's no podium this evening, but...
Do you mind if I'm informal?
I think that Peter needs you to be close to that microphone.
I can move the mic.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
That's fine.
And I need you close to a speaker, so I think we actually have to move the microphones this way. Sorry. For the speaker, for those who are on the call. Okay.
Still good.
I think you'll be okay. I think that will pick you up.
All right. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to provide an update on the implementation of the town's fiscal year 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program. This is the second public hearing. It's required under the CBG program. The first, as the board may have remembered from calendar year 2018, it was in early February probably, calendar year of 2018, we had to prepare, conduct a public hearing prior to the submittal of the town's application for funding. The second public hearing that is required is sometime during implementation of a program. So we're coming at the very end of 2018 CBG. We've been, we were awarded $550,000 in CBG funds. You have the handout in front of you. There's two columns. The first column is the budget that was originally submitted under the application, and then the second budget shows expended funds, where we are today. The grant funded a single program activity, a total of $446,864 in grant funds, was directed toward the implementation of the memorial renovation and reuse project. And as member Duval said, this focus on providing HVAC system for a portion of the school building, it represents about 20,000 square feet. This is the area of the gymnasium, the surrounding, what is it, the...
Restrooms.
Yep.
Locker rooms.
The locker rooms, thank you. That's what I was forgetting. And then the, you know, the other rooms that were used for computer rooms and so all of that area and the main entrance off of Valley Street is all now, or will be soon, will be closed up, the project served by a new HVAC system. This was important to the board members to allow future use of the building, so we're getting closer, we're moving towards that implementation. Additionally, there was another $50,364 for program income. This is typically for department staff to carry out the project, and then another $52,772 in general has been. As you can see, the amounts have changed quite a bit in the expended. This was because when we bid the project, it was much higher than the bid estimate, so we had to scramble, put in additional funds from admin toward the project, and we're also adding another $55,950 from Community Development Block Grant Program income. This is money that has been collected over the years, the housing rehab project closes out, and there's a payment back to us or something. So these funds have all been directed toward the project. The construction work was bid during the fall of last year. We issued the invitation for bids in October. Bids were due in November. In this project, we have to do file suffis, the categories of HVAC, electrical, plumbing and heating. So that, again, if bids came in tie, we were able to direct other funds to make the project a-go. A contract was awarded in December and final contract was executed in January. The contractor was Kirk's Incorporated, they're out of Westfield. The town, in my, you know, being here with the town, we've never worked with them before, but I have to say it's been a real pleasure. They have done excellent work. They've been very kindly, kept the worksite clean. We started our first meeting in February. We had two or three construction progress meetings, and then March 5th, that was the last one we conducted, and unfortunately after that, because of COVID-19, we were no longer to have the meetings of the, you know, construction company staff, town staff, building commissioner, and the project engineer. I'd like to give a shout out to Jared Gardner, our building commissioner. I think without him, projects were stalled across the Commonwealth. A lot of CBG projects have stalled because of COVID-19, but Jerry has been able to go into the building, he's been able to ensure that the contractor is working safely, their social distancing, kind of by the nature of the work, they've been able to social distance, and Jerry has been able to do project checks throughout the duration of the construction, so that has really helped, and we will be able to close this project out on time. So, thank you, Jerry. I don't know if the board has any other questions. We will be closing this out by the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, and again, I think there will be a little bit more work to do. We'll have to strategize about how to get some of those COVID issues completed before the building will have full use, or that portion of the building will have full use. But I think this project certainly significantly advances our desires to have more community uses for memorial school buildings. So, have any answering questions?
Sure. I will open it up to any members of the board who might have any questions for Donna at this time.
Hi, Donna. I was wondering, some years ago, time goes by so quickly, there was a gentleman from Dalton that showed quite a bit of interest in the housing component. Have we been staying in contact with him?
We have, actually. On March 5th, he was one of the potential developers that visited the site. As the board may know, we issued a request for proposals for the classroom wing, redevelopment of the classroom wing into some type of housing. The RFP expressed an openness to, for other development ideas, but we had, I'd say, eight to 10 developers at that meeting. Town Administrator was there. I was actually encouraged that day by the comments that we received. I think we heard from developers that the building was in surprisingly good shape, that they saw that, you know, the way it was construction with the wide halls and the large classrooms, it would make it easy or easier to redevelop and reuse it for housing. So I thought that was very encouraging. Unfortunately, you can remember the date, March 5th, we were pretty much closed the following week, and everything has been shut down. We would have received proposals in May, that was the scheduled deadline. We eventually sustained it, I mean, you know, we basically terminated that proposal process. We communicated to all of the developers, told them that we hoped to pick it up late August or September, so that remains to be discussed. The other thing I will say is, we heard from many of those developers how important the 4ER was. In fact, we had received formal requests by two of the developers to extend the proposal process, don't have proposals due until after the public hearing or town meeting, when they could find out if, whether or not it was a-go with 4ER. They indicated that, given the financial climate now, 4ER becomes a necessity in getting funding for projects like that. So that was very interesting to know, too.
Another question. In this round, is there any work done in the auditorium? I think it's a valuable asset if it can be brought back to the standards needed to use it. I think if we change our voting to up there and our town meetings can go there, so it's a beautiful building. I mean, the auditorium is very nice. I know that this last round, I had asked you personally, you said there wasn't anything done during that first round.
Right, we had hoped to include the auditorium in the HVAC, so it would have also been provided that, you know, service, but unfortunately, we had to cut that out. These are, the system that is designed are, you know, rooftop units, and so it's a system that you can add new roof units. So it was designed to accommodate the auditorium area, so it will be easy to add that on, and otherwise we won't require a lot of engineering, it won't require a lot of piping and stuff, but we just need to find the funds. So that is something that we will continue to look for opportunities.
And this is my last, and this is my comment. I know a couple of years ago, we had a little problem with the new roof because no one was up there to check, and some of the rooftop runoffs were flagged. Do you know if anybody's been up there to check to see if they're not indeed?
They have. They, again, checked with the installation of the roof. I will say, as the board knows, we've always had a problem somehow this roof attracts, you know, rocks and balls from, from kids. We had to put special protectors around our, you know, rooftop units and stuff. So, but yes, to answer your question, it does get regular inspections.
Okay, and so, thank you, Donna.
Other questions for Donna? From the board? I will open it up to the public. We do have 14 people on the call. Deb, I will get you the full list when we are done. If you wish to speak about the fiscal year 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program, we are in a public hearing, and I do open it up for comments. If you choose to speak, please unmute yourself and state your first and last name before speaking. Give it a few more seconds in case anybody's having trouble unmuting themselves. Quiet. I guess it wasn't the public hearing, Donna, I thought.
No, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Then I will entertain a motion to come out of the public hearing.
Sure.
I have a motion by Rick. So I have a second. I have a second by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That is unanimous. Close the public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant. You need a motion for us to accept any of this or not?
No.
So we are good?
No.
Okay. Jay has a point of order, item B for public hearing petition for pole relocation. That is something that we need to table?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay.
That pertains to some of the poles that need to be moved in order to access the Route 8 Commercial Street construction project. Just coordinating that with National Grid would help from the Community Development Office, but just not ready yet.
Okay, so I do need a motion to table that?
I'll make a motion. Table a petition for pole relocation from National Grid in Verizon for 37 and 39 Commercial Street.
Okay, I have a motion by Rick. So I have a second.
Second.
I have a second by Jim. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, that is unanimous. I will move on to new business. First item under new business is the approval of the annual appointment. There was an attachment to the agenda. You should have the amended version of the appointment. Thank you, Donna. Appreciate it. So in front of you, all of the individuals who are on this list have been confirmed for their role, and we can go through. I can read them all. If you want to hold one, we can hold it, and then at the end, approve them in mass. Does that sound like an okay process?
This was published online.
Yeah, so thank you.
I think we really need to read them all.
Okay, whatever the board's pleasure is.
Anyone with an interest would have had the opportunity.
Okay.
So I will make a motion.
Yep.
To board through the amended list of appointments as provided.
Okay.
One second.
So I have a motion by Rick, and I have a second by Jim. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? That is unanimous. Next item under new business is to officially postpone town meeting. The board did vote at our June 3rd meeting to move forward with a 112 budget, therefore not making town meeting needed at this time. We had originally scheduled it for June 22nd, but this would be an official vote to postpone town meeting until a later date. Yes, we determine. I don't think there's anything more to that, other than a postponing town meeting from June 22nd to a later date, yes, we determine.
Just a curiosity, we actually postpone it and not the moderator?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we had approved the warrant and had posted it, it would then moderate it, is my understanding, but this is the official, so that's the town meeting.
I will make a motion to postpone town meeting until a new date.
Okay. Thank you. I think if you could just amend it to say postpone from June 22nd to a later date. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion by Rick. So I have a second.
I'll start then.
I have a second by Jim. Is there any discussion on the postponement of town meeting? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay, that is unanimous. The next item on our agenda is the deliberation and decision on the interim police chief position. We do have a number of people with us on the call, so I do want to take just a little bit of time and kind of review the process, where we've been and so forth. So initially, the Board of Selectmen had put together the job description, had put forward a committee to review applications for a permanent police chief that was back in February. We had set an end of March deadline for applications. We had received 15 applications at that time. This is also the time that 1519 kicked, and meetings were then kind of put on hold. So the committee work was not able to really commence at that time. The board had put together this process to be a very public process, wanting to engage many community members in the process, as well as having input from officers, from department heads, and across the board. Again, with the way things have been with COVID, we were unable to go forward with that process the way that we had wanted to. This board then decided in May that we would move forward with an interim police chief process. We published the job description. We communicated with the 15 applicants who had submitted their application back in February, letting them know that we would be going forward with an interim process that would be good for a six-month period of time, or no more than six-month period of time, and encouraged them to either apply for this or to wait for the posting to come out at a later date. We did receive six applications by the deadline of June 4th. The board on June 8th decided to interview all six, or invite all six candidates to be interviewed. We conducted interviews of five of the candidates as one of them withdrew. We held those interviews on June 8th, June 9th, and June 10th for about an hour, hour and 15 minutes each. We interviewed Sean Boyne, Jeff Coe, Eric Josephson, John Nisham, and Troy Bacon for the position of interim police chief. I was going to read some of the qualities that we were looking for, but I can't quite find that. Yes, that's what I'm looking for. For those who are on the call, thank you, Rick. Appreciate that. We had posted that this is a temporary position, expected not to exceed six months. We had stated that the Town of Adams is seeking an experienced, energetic, and dynamic law enforcement professional to manage its police department and provide leadership for 16 full-time officers. We talked enough a lot about what Adams is, but we also indicated that applicants must possess advanced knowledge, skills, training, and... possess advanced knowledge, skills, training, and progressive law enforcement experience. Successful candidates will demonstrate excellent communication and interpersonal skills, effective leadership skills, a commitment to community policing, a collaborative approach to working with other agencies, and a strategic approach to utilizing law enforcement resources and practices. Requirements include a bachelor's degree in criminal justice or related discipline, ten years of law enforcement experience, five years supervisory experience, or any equivalent combination of education and experience. Preference was given to candidates with previous administrative experience and advanced education. And it went on to talk about how they would apply. Those are the qualifications that we had laid out. We felt that the six people who had applied met those requirements. A reminder that this is a vital position here in our community, and that the five individuals that we interviewed presented themselves very well, each of them bringing something different to the table, each of them qualified. And I believe that the board has a difficult job in front of us. And with all of that, I open it up to any member of the board, to the board. Yes?
Can I make a motion?
You can. I did want to just state one more thing because I don't know if the board is aware. I did provide videos for the members of the police department to access. So, all of our interviews were recorded. I put them on flash drives, dropped them off on Saturday for members of the police department to review if they're convenient and to provide any input if they had it prior to our meeting this evening. So, I did want to just state for the record that that was done.
On the webpage as well.
And it was put on the webpage, and we did have members of the public who asked for those videos to review them as well, and that was, those direct links were sent to them. So...
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Troy Bacon as interim chief through his interviews. I felt as though he was very outgoing. I felt talking with him, I felt as though he'd be an excellent fit for the Town of Adams. He has no personal connections, so there's going to be no favorites in the community yet. Just the whole interview process, I'm not saying anything bad about the other ones, but he was very outgoing. He had answers. He didn't have to think about the answers. They were there, and he added to his answers confidently. No, and what I heard sounded like was a very good fit for us.
I have a motion by Jim to appoint Troy Bacon as the interim police chief. I would just add that we would do a, pending a successful background check and employment agreement. That's all I would add to your motion.
Pending a successful background check, can we, what was it?
An employment agreement.
An employment agreement.
Madam Chairman, would he need a physical?
That would be part of the employment agreement.
Okay.
Yes. I'm sorry, Rick?
I'm sorry.
A second. So, I have a motion and a second to appoint Troy Bacon. Do I have any discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say Friday, when I came into the last interview, I was formed by two people who I hadn't tied for first and another individual, a very close friend. And until that interview, and you kind of just blew me away, got all right answers. I had some good ideas to help our young police force move forward, and I went forward to it.
Other discussions?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments.
Certainly.
I concur that, I believe that we had a very good crop of applicants. I like the people that were just police chiefs when it came to state policemen. I think they're in a different vein and see things a little bit differently. That's just my thought. I too was, and I, what I would like to do first of all is, I'd like to preface my remarks and comments. I want everyone to know that I didn't talk to one selectman about choice. I did not talk to the town administrator. I did not talk to Chief Tarsa, and the only person I talked to was my inner self. And this is a big decision for our town, and I was down to two finalists. And I will mention the names of the two people, and then I'll make my choice and the reason why. First of all, I really liked Eric Josephson. I liked his demeanor. I feel that he really showed that he wanted to, you know, continue his work going back to school when he was fifty-five years old to complete a degree so that he could move along with his hope of continuing in law enforcement. I also liked an awful lot the caring manner he had toward his family. He gave up a lot of things when situations were tough in his family unit. And to me, he was a very, very nice person, and I think that's a very important part. I think he would have been great with the community, and I was torn. But I too would like to throw my vote to Troy Bacon, and there's numerous reasons, but one thing that really struck me when he said integrity counts. And in the scope of one's life, integrity perhaps is the most important attribute that one person can hold, is integrity. So, I thought he had a lot of energy. I think that, as Rick mentioned, I think that he'll be a good fit. He'll be good with the young officers. I don't think he has any airs about him. I also liked his communication skills. I also liked some of the recruiting methods he had for diverse, diversity in the Frankfurt, Indiana Police Force. And I also felt that he would be the best choice, and I liked his background and history. He wants to come to this area, and being from the outside, he has no skin in the game. So, he's going to come and look at it and do what he thinks he needs to do. We did give him some guidance at the interview. So, that is my reasoning for voting for Troy Bacon.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, most of, and I agree with the choice that my fellow members have brought forward in this motion. And it's amazing when people come from out of state or down near Boston, New England City, they come here, they cannot believe how wonderful a wonderful community we have here in the Town of Adams compared to sometimes our constituents, our brother life, but the majority of us believe we have a great community here. This individual, it's an outdoorsman, looking forward, chosen to take advantage of the mountains and the hiking trails and the bike trails, and the education that this individual brings forward. I'll just talk a little bit about his experience. It's not, you know, not like someone came in here and wowed the board, which is what a great event is in that case. This individual has a tremendous amount of experience for this position. We're talking a six-month position here. Education is a bachelor's degree in law and society from Dooton University, and he has a master of science in criminology and criminal justice from Indiana State. He's taken numerous training. He decided to retire, I believe, at the end of last year. It was nothing recent that he's retired. He decided that it's time for a change, and he was the chief of police, I believe, for eight years for Frankfurt Department. From January two thousand and twelve until present, he's been the chief of police. So, he has a tremendous amount of experience. He mentioned that the city of Frankfurt has a thirty percent minority population, and he described the ways that he, him and his officers were working the community and working with the diversity of that community to everyone, working together, moving forward. So, he had some very good points in that area. And just overall, I think I'm looking, I was looking forward to someone in this type of position, which is six months, it'll probably quickly, someone that, as I mentioned with my fellow board members, that someone that is independent and outside voice that can, as being part of the community, the police department, spend a lot of time just listening to the police officers over at the department and their issues, their concerns, and someone that they think makes the police department better, and also from the board of selectmen in the town administration and from the community. I think we, you know, maybe what's happened with boys being around our limits is just right for security, or maybe he can, this individual can bring forward our experience from the Midwest, been toward as chief of police for eight years. He can bring forward some positive improvements prior to, prior to the end of the six months. And in a public study, provide some, his inputs to how we can early, the current case setup. And it's all, I'm looking for this to be a complete positive effort here, all of us working together, the way, the situation we're in in this country that we need, I think, certainly not our voice, and it's for reference, again, to listen, to listen to the officers that are there, to offer positive improvements in the town administration to the board. And after that six months, I think we're going to be a much better place than we are today. So, looking forward to working with the gentleman as long as he accepts the contract and overall the other requirements to be employed in our community. So, very excited about this individual and look forward to working with him as, and Rick, as part of the Public Safety Subcommittee, the town administrator, to see what we can do to make our police department the best it can be. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I would just add that I also was impressed with Chief Bacon, with his years of service, but also his, the communication systems that he put in place while he was in Frankfurt, Indiana, the huge social media presence that the department has. And I was also happy to hear about his work with press releases, year-end reports, some statistical information that he's providing on a regular basis to his mayor, city council, et cetera. But it was really his work with underrepresented groups that I felt would be a really nice addition to our community, and looking forward to that. But overall, I just thought that he would be a great member of a good team of people that we already have in the police department. So, I thought that he would be a good fit. And I will say, I'm happy to see so many of the members of the department on the call this evening to hear the news firsthand, so I appreciate that you took the time to review the interviews, to review the resumes, and to also call in tonight. With that, are there any other comments? We have a motion by Jim and a second by Rick. If I don't hear any other comments, I'll go ahead and ask for a vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one abstaining? That is unanimous. That is exciting. I would just ask that we consider making a motion to have the town administrator handle the negotiation, communication, and administrative aspects of the hiring process, and removing it from the board of selectmen. Us, we do the hiring, but I think that, I would feel better if it was the town administrator doing the negotiation on this one, unless somebody on the board would like to negotiate that contract.
No, Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion that the town administrator worked with Troy Bacon on a contract under the inputs from board of selectmen, and that will be contracted between the town administrator and Mr. Bacon that the town administrator brings that forward to the board of selectmen for final approval.
Okay. That motion by John, do I have a second?
I'll start.
I have a second by Rick. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Madam Chairman, you can...
If you could step out and make that phone call, that would be great. While you do that, I do have somebody just called in with the last...
Mary.
I'm sorry, who is it?
Mary.
Hi, Mary.
Yep.
Thank you.
Aye. Thanks.
I didn't recognize the number. Okay.
Okay.
And Mary, if you want to mute yourself, we're not quite there yet for your portion of the agenda. But I will bring up Mark Gladeau to talk a little bit about the reopening of parks, unless there's something John or Jim wanted to talk about first?
I'll defer to...
Okay. Mark, do you want to join us at the microphone? I'll switch the camera around to you. Am I in? There you are.
Okay. Good. So, when I was here last, we very briefly spoke about the opening of our parks, our playgrounds, and our athletic fields. So...
You getting your phone? Okay. And then Mark, just make sure that you are also speaking loud enough for that speaker in between the two microphones on that table.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry.
So, we have received documentation, some of which was discussed during my presence here, from the Executive Office of Energy and Armed Affairs regarding implementation of our parks, playgrounds, and athletic fields. So, I have presented to the board our recommendations for implementing the opening of our parks, playgrounds, and athletic fields. So, most of which, the first page are directly from the guidance from the state, and the appropriate pages is delegated to provide the guidance for the opening of our parks, playgrounds, and athletic fields. Page two, however, is tailored by the town. So, we have provided, we have created, and then provided to you a signage of which we will, is what we feel is sufficient to be posted at the parks and on our website. We're also recommending that we have the organizers of youth and adult sports teams to provide an application for associate use, as well as providing a health and safety plan, and then we'll make the final approval for use by whatever organization that's submitting the application. We've continued to experience problems at the basketball courts, so I've already asked the town administrator, Director DPW, to inform us to remove the basketball hoops, and those can be reinstalled at a later form of time when social distancing restrictions have been lifted. As far as the current order for the parks, playgrounds, and athletic fields, I'd recommend that the board rescind the current order to take effect on June twenty-sixth, and simultaneously, I'll issue a Chapter One eleven Public Health Order, pretty much with what's on page one of my recommendation. So... with what's on page one of my recommendation. So maintain consistency with the state regulations, with the state guidelines for theaters, and just with these identified tweaks to our community. The state's orders and their guidance may very well change between now and June 26. They always take into consideration, so for example, when I left cleaning the last time, that was with a document dated June 3, and the very next day, another document appeared, and then subsequent to that, on the 9th, another document appeared. So changes are going to happen. The governor gave the authorization yesterday for free COVID testing for persons anonymously who attended mass gatherings. So it would not be surprising next week to find that our numbers have increased, or our numbers throughout the state have increased. So it would not be surprising. Also, we hear that there may be a delay in progressing to the next phase of the governor's plan. So we take all that into consideration, all that notwithstanding. It would be our recommendation that, again, the board would rescind between now and, say, within the next week, rescind the order that's currently in place. And then I will submit to Jay and my other colleagues here at Town Hall a draft order for implementation on June 26.
My apologies, but the current order is what needs to be rescinded. So what is the current order? That's, like, what's currently in place that we're rescinding? Just to refresh that.
The park disclosure order.
That's what I thought. The old park disclosure order that you're asking for as of June 26, put in a different order?
Yes.
In compliance with the phase two opening of the state?
Yes. So I would ask that the board rescind their order, that was March 29.
Yep.
And then I will issue an order, a public health, chapter 11, a public health order to take effect on June 26. So for example, your order, your rescinding would take place, say, 8:30 a.m. on June 26. My order would take effect 8:31 a.m. on June 26, four to zero.
Okay. Questions or comments?
So Mark, thank you for all the information you provided to the board this evening. One question I have is that, as I mentioned at the last meeting also, that individuals or groups are expected to use these facilities at their own risk in accordance with the government or the governor's phase two for recreational play or for playgrounds. Because the town rules these fields, and we have insurance on these fields, and we can strengthen the governor's access, and we cannot necessarily. Maybe we can also, Ken also has a few words on this, but can we say, with the situation we're in, with the COVID-19 virus, a very serious virus that does impact minimally, that got some children that you could say you bet you own risk as a community, who own the parks, and something may happen. So I was wondering, Bacon, would you say that?
So I would say the answer would be yes, because DPH can jax with MHAO to provide the new guidance for that. So that's pretty much the stance all municipalities throughout the Commonwealth have taken. So we're just mimicking their language.
Okay, so we're not the first to do this?
Correct.
Okay. Now, there are many, not many, but there are a few last meeting, the leadership of the leagues on the phone, and I'm sure there's some, someone this evening. You know, to briefly say, what does this mean for a, for example, a softball league or a little league? I'm sure talking in close talks about the contact sports that I'm considering at this point. But what does, what does it mean to them in a general sense? And they will, I'm sure they're going to pick up this information when they revise their plan. So my second question is, are you, is your department the ones who are going to review the plans by the leagues and approve that? Executive, authority wise, the town administrator, who has the authority to approve those plans to use the parks for the league?
Sure, sure. First of all, this allows all organized sports to be in practice, so that when they move into the next phase, whether, or the next step, where they're allowed to play games, play skirmishes, they'll be prepared to. And secondly, yes, we have approved, we reviewed the applications, just as we do with the restaurants, and the approval of restaurants with me open.
Okay, so just go back to the first question. You indicated that we can have practices, right? But for phase two, as of right now, that doesn't mean the ordinary all the way through practice, totally.
There are some variations, some precautionary steps that present, preventative steps that they'll have to take, but all that is going to be provided to the organizers of those events. So most of which is provided within page one of the documents that I gave you. And then as I stated, there, I'm on the phone with DPH and EEA three times a week. So any changes, we'll get those to the applicants or the approved organizations before approval, and then any changes or modifications after, just as we're doing with lodging and our restaurants.
And I know Gary Garner's also on the phone, so Gary, you can time in as well if you wanted to. I'll open it up for, yep, Tim has a comment.
I just have a question. You were saying that the free testing is coming up, do you anticipate upswing in the positive COVID numbers? Now, will that slow down the process of opening everything up, do you think?
Those decisions are made in the eastern part of the state, but should that be surprising if there is a delay of progression of other cases?
You had mentioned all organized sports, but it actually only includes like baseball, softball, tennis, you know, non-contact sports, because basketball, football, soccer, lacrosse are not allowed. I don't think they're even allowed in phase two yet.
Correct. So it's going to be the sporting activities of a non-contact nature. But baseball, and that was given as one example, you can't have contact. In baseball, however, for practicing, you can have practicing of an organized football team, so long as they maintain that approximately six-foot distance.
No tackling.
Correct. That's what the throwing-
Right.
Conditioning looks likely.
Correct.
True.
Yep.
Well, it would have to be outdoor conditioning. You can't go into the gym.
Correct. However, choose from sport team. So this particular order also encompasses child recreational camps and sports camps, and so there are going to be times in different weather where those types of organizations have to go inside. Okay, so there are some limited usage inside, but those are only of use for-
Sure.
I believe it's twelve feet, twelve-foot distance when they're practicing?
Okay. So you said there's actually three parts for distancing. Okay, so the six-foot, yes, there's a twelve-foot, and then there's another one for point-to-point. So, so again, there's a lot of variables, it depends on the activity, and that's why we want that application, so we can discern that activity that's going to play, so we can give them appropriate guidance.
That's kind of-
The problem that I see is that, once this edict goes out, that the kids, I'm going to understand that they're going to say, boy, this is good, now we can, you know, do what we want to do. If there's guidance by adults, it will work, but if, you know, this comes out, most of the kids, most of the people that use the field are young kids. So they'll hear this, and they're going to say, boy, you know, this is, you know, great. And so, you know, they're just going to partake the way that they normally have, I believe anyways. And I just kind of wonder, is it even worth going through all this? I mean, nobody loves sports like I do. I mean, I lived it night and day as a youngster, continued to play sports right through college. But I'm just wondering if this starts creeping in and all of a sudden, you know, we're getting, you know, more COVID-19 cases, not to say it will. I mean, I think, oh, right now, there's a respite, and it's looking good, the numbers in Berkshire County as far as COVID cases and so on and so forth. But we could be opening up a door that may have negative consequences that we didn't think, you know, would happen. So I, I mean, I want the kids to have exercise, I think that's healthy for children, but unless it's put in a way that adults are there at all times to make sure that the rules are complied with, I just don't understand how, we don't have the number of people to be running back and forth to these facilities and say, you know, you can't be doing this, you can't be doing that. And so, I don't know, do we open a Pandora's box? If we open up the fields now, and because, I mean, summer's starting, well, not to wane, but we're getting there, you know? So when the governor's order number 37 came out, which allowed usage of the parks, playgrounds, and athletic fields, the news media broadcast that, okay? So the very next day, the police and I were going out for our field, okay, informing people. And subsequently, we've had three intense discussions with groups of youth-
Right.
About what the actual requirements were and the approvals were, and it did not include those non-organized sporting events. And that's why I've asked the director for, I'm sorry, the town administrator and then-
I'll say a motion.
The DPW director to remove those basketball hoops, because that is the population that we received a great amount of pushback from over the past week and a half. That's going to make things easier for the people. Definitely like my role a little bit. But our skating park, I haven't seen one person out there enough to say that they're not using it, you know, not driving by. But I've yet to see anybody in our skate park, but that skate park in North Adams is fully occupied, and no one complies with the governor's order. Okay? So are you, I've had some conversations with some parents who aren't going to allow their kids to participate in these sports yet, but others want that to happen. And I'd like to see it happen. It's going to be in a structured event, a structured atmosphere. You also have the provision for daycare providers or other parents with small children who are going to use that the playground. So, you know, with our current order, you know, we've had people out there using the fields, just throwing the ball. That's acceptable. That's a, according to the order, that's acceptable conduct, safe conduct out there. So I think that, I think it's beneficial for our community if we do this.
And you would have the signage that also indicates that they would be using the facility at their own risk, and here are some guidelines to-
Right. And, you know, with that signage, you do have the media putting out the information, you know, yes, wear your mask, do your sanitation, your personal sanitation. And I think for the most part, and I think it's shown in our staff here, that our community residents, yes, are doing that.
Tim, you got a comment?
Yeah. North Adams did open their skate park. I stopped in Wyckin House, and they told us, oh, there is no real physical contact in the skate park, or you're not touching anything really, per se, so it's fairly safe to go ahead and open it. I just wanted to make that clear.
Well, as I expressed my last visit here, we can have a go in that they record their activities. It's not uncommon for them to record their activities, whether with a recorder or a cell phone, and then they put it on the social media or whatever. So you're going to have that transfer, if anybody's asymptomatic, you're going to have that transfer. I just thought that, you know, it's a caution for our community residents, yes, that that would not be wrong. But that's going to avail to them, that opportunity to use it, and use it as the word responsible.
Yes, right.
Just adding one more thing too. When things are going to open, don't go to Facebook and ask Facebook, is this opening? We do have a town website. Go on the town website. It's going to open, it's going to be there, we'll be safe. Don't ask your best friend on Facebook, oh, Jesus, because it don't work that way. I'm sorry.
Facebook isn't like Google.
I'll tell my experts on there.
Yeah.
So, did you have a comment?
I just had a question. Would it be a good idea to ask the police to, you know, if they're going by and they see a number of kids, because somebody sees you, they don't know you from a whole on the ground, that what you are, a policeman, I mean, maybe they can explain it to them, not saying you can't, but, you know, but I don't know if the policeman would feel obligated to want to do that, because it might not be in their contract or something. But I'm just saying that, you know, I'd like to see the police, if they could.
So with the order that was issued on March 29, they are authorized to-
Okay, good.
In my conversations with some of the police officers and supervisors, yes, they have enforced the orders. And when we had that disagreement of what the authorizations were, we had a half ago, there were police officers, yes, who had similar experiences and were, they've been great as far as when I called them, and then they too had made encounters outside my working hours, and then made referrals to me, and then I follow up with enforcement action. So I think we can hopefully, the new chief will have the same, same level of cooperation, but I think that the police are superior. When they don't have, they haven't been yet deputized by the board to enforce public health orders, but notwithstanding, they've been superior.
I need to clarify, it would be the board of health, not the board-
Yes.
Not the board of selectmen that would-
Yes.
Ask for that order.
And got work, yes.
Just wanted to clarify. Yep. Other questions, comments, or Mark on the reopening of parks?
Just one more thing, but I agree that organized sports are really leaning towards here, and other communities have been opening up their leagues, this field, all in little leagues have already taken sign-ups, they're moving forward with the rules that were identified. I'll throw phones off, please. By their communities, and I would, and I want to-
Okay.
I'm sure one of our constituents, so other communities have been having sign-ups, and I want to make sure that- Sure, one of our constituents, one of our constituents, uh, so other communities have been having sign-ups, and I wanna make sure that the, uh, the kids are, the, the, uh, young athletes in our community will have the same opportunity, and it's a safe environment for them. Um, I, I don't know, all leagues are, are at the urge and, and understanding what the, uh, way forward is, and they'll, it'll work, I'm sure with you. Um, uh, but there's other league, uh, or two that have decided not to have a seat in this year, which hopefully, after possibly listening to this meeting, or reading in the, uh, the news media, that maybe they can reconsider, uh, teaching these kids, the kids out there and throwing the ball, and, uh, Cal State, wherever it may be, just getting them out there and working together, getting them out of house, and, uh, and, um, working as part of the team, so, uh, but we'll see, it's a time, and some communities decided not to do this, but, uh, but, uh, thank you again for the report that was provided to us by the instructions department, um, so with the next, with the next phase, in, in this process, so are you required as an evaluation?
Right.
What would be next for state approval?
So, they would need to be, you know, approved by the board, uh, to rescind the March twenty-ninth order, effective whatever date and time, and then I will file with the public health board, uh, implementing that order one minute after that.
So that'd be a, a, a agenda item for the next meeting?
So Mark has actually asked us to, um, rescind, um, to take effect June twenty-sixth. Could have a meeting next Wednesday, which would be June twenty-fifth, um, which we could act on that, um, it would just be effective the next day, and that would still be.
Whatever date and time you establish, my rule will go into effect.
And you're saying, like, you would be ready to go with your order?
Yeah.
As early as June twenty-sixth, and a process in place?
Yeah, first and second.
Okay. So we can do that, we can put that on next Wednesday's agenda to officially rescind March twenty-ninth order, and give, uh, the code enforcement officers the authority to then put in, uh, place a public health order, chapter one eleven?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, um, to go into effect at a date that we would then determine, which could be as early as the following day. I think I've understood that.
Yes, I agree.
That's what the board would like to do. Okay, okay, however?
Unless Mark spoke about it when I was out of the room, for those organizations that wanna use the field, they should think about their usage request now, and begin to think about how they wanna do that, and then when Mark finishes his guideline, they should have those guidelines, and make sure when they submit their package, it's all, all together, and just as a reminder, Russell Field will be closed due to our rehabilitation project. Valley will be available, Reed will be available, and Renthru, at their request, DPW will still remain for games only, at their request.
Fine, Rick.
A bring up a question, are your requests for use, who do you think go to?
Normal course, so the user question come to the normal, through the normal channels. The only thing different would be Mark's protocols have to be attached to that, and so when we're authorizing, when the board authorizes the use of the facility, they're doing so with an understanding that the applicant understands what their responsibilities are for organized play. That's really the only difference, but any previous facility use request is not valid at this time. Everyone has to fill out another one, and fill out the materials that Mark will provide, so do, we're just adding one, one prompt to the application process, that's all.
So, so, um, for those that are, uh, the softball leagues and any, any other organized league that wants to, uh, go through this process, and I'm sure they're, they would like to start as soon as they can, and be ready when that date is set by the board to open up the parks again, um, is Mark the contact that individuals can call, league presidents can call?
Yes.
Uh, so they just call the town hall and select, uh, the section's department, and then ask for you, and then they can, they can have questions?
So again, there's four member teams here in town hall.
Sure.
Um, so they can certainly ask for any of us, um, but.
Who do you think would be able to contact and even call?
They'll probably call Deb, usually most of them call, uh, the town administrator's office for the form, um, to start the process. So I would recommend that that continue to be the way, um, and then Deb would be in touch with the other three members of the team, just a reminder that Deb is a, a critical member of that four-person team, um, and it's Mark, Jerry, and then Robert.
Yes.
So, that's the, that's the team in play, handling all of the reopening. Yes.
Will that form be available online?
Yes. Yep, yeah, because we made the, um, temporary outdoor seating form online, so we would also make this one online, this one. So why don't we make this an agenda item for next Wednesday, to, um, just go over kind of all of it again, and have the official vote to rescind the current order and put in the other order. Fair enough? Okay, and we'll clarify some of the other pieces of the process, just to do it again. Okay, Mark, don't go away, I hear you're providing, um, an update on the next item.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what Jerry te- tells me via the chat function in Zoom, that you have an update on the outdoor seating, and what has been approved to date.
Okay, so do you want the names of those seven establishments that have been?
So on Friday, I had shared with the board that, uh, approved had been Forest Park, Winter Club, The Grimes, AJ's, Heindruck's Pub, and Pizza House, and there were a few others in the works.
Right, that being Bonfire, and now, as of today, the Happy House.
Okay.
Uh, and then pending, we have, uh, the Bathroom Lodge, we do like in public, for, 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 for establishments, uh, to make modifications to your application.
Okay, great, so we currently have seven places in town where people can dine outside, uh, safely, and, uh, two in the works.
Correct.
Excellent.
And, and there's others that haven't submitted any plans, uh, but they're always welcome to.
Yep.
And again, Gary and I will work with those establishments, uh, if all possible, to allow that.
Great, and I heard wonderful things, that, uh, the team is turning everything around very quickly for the establishment, so kudos to all of the teams who are working on processing that paperwork and, um, also doing inspections in a timely manner.
Right, and, and so if I can just comment, like, for example, the Bathroom Lodge, that's taken the longest, because that, uh, Jerry doesn't have the jurisdiction in the state campus, I do, he does, and so he had to rely on the state building inspector, um, so he's been there once, um, and then he and I will vote next week, uh, the final walkthrough, which we believe what needs to be corrected, we'll be corrected by then, and, and that also incorporates, uh, with my jurisdiction logic.
Great, question for Mark on the outdoor seating?
Um, I'm just glad to, uh, hear that you've been working with, uh, Bathroom Lodge, um, I know the state owns the facility itself, and it is leased out, so, um, so it's really under the auspices of the state for some respect, and the governor has given an okay to have outs- outdoor seating for meals, and, um, what will that do? I know they have, uh, I believe they have a seasonal beer and wine, uh?
Not seasonal, it's a, it's a whole.
Well, okay, so, um, will that go along with the, uh, with their being able to be seated outside and have, uh, wine and, uh, a beer with their meal?
So, yes, so that caveat, uh, get this authorization, um, is that, uh, anybody that's gonna consume, uh, very, very wine, they're going to have to, uh, consume food along with that contract, so, it's a, that guy, but also with the Bathroom Lodge, uh, they have lodgings, and there's, uh, there's COVID authorization for lodgings, right?
Will, will they be able, I mean, they, I'm not sure how many, uh, rooms they have, it's changed over the years, it's gone through a lot of iterations, but, uh, will they have, uh, the okay to have maximum capacity?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Right, and actually, alcohol, which I think you're gonna have to file for the, uh, amendments?
Amendments.
Because they currently don't have it on the board.
Right.
Yes.
Yep, and that would go to the licensing subcommittee to sign off on. Anything else for Mark?
Yeah, I do have something.
Go ahead, Joe, on outdoor seating?
No, no, it's not, this is an aside, are we really discussing the out?
We are.
Okay.
But, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep.
Okay, um, I was wondering about tag sales, while you were gone, we had a gentleman down here that, he has a tag sale every week. He comes in with a box truck and, uh, hang signs on our poles, which I don't like, because he uses packaging tape, so you try to get that off a pole, and then if you go to paint them, and you're going over, uh, packaging, uh, tape that doesn't hold too good, so.
So I think maybe last, I'm sure.
There's been so many meetings, I can't remember the date.
Very briefly, we discussed the tag sales, I believe it's approved by the board, prohibition on tag sales.
Correct.
Or whatever parameters, I don't know, uh, in Pittsfield, we did have a city ordinance, and, and it defined what you could and couldn't do, could and could not do, and, uh, and also defined who had that enforcement, so that enforcement authority, uh, which the board held was one of several city agencies that, that had that authority, so I don't know what, I, I haven't seen any, any documentation with regard to the board's approval of prohibing tag sales, uh, but another aspect of Pittsfield ordinance was that you put the fixed signs to the public, any public facility pole. So, if you didn't make that specification in your prohibition of tag sales, again, you know, refer maybe to Mr. St. John, uh, for language or type, help expand that prohibition?
Ed, I know that you're on the call, if you wanna unmute yourself, can you remind me who, um, is responsible for enforcement of tag sales? Go ahead.
Well, we have a zoning bylaw that requires, uh, anybody who wants to operate a tag sale to come before the board of selectmen for a permit to operate a, a tag sale, and that's what traditionally has been done over the years, but it's, it's actually part of our zoning bylaw, which is enforceable by the zoning enforcement officer.
That takes me out of the game.
Yeah.
Without.
Okay.
I'll do a few off. Mr. Garner, Jerry?
Yeah. Who's also on the call, but Jerry, before you speak, I know you unmuted yourself, Jim has a comment or a question?
Yeah, I can remember, I don't know how long ago it was, but people that wanted that tag association on all, had a permit, like you're saying, and he also got signs, he never told work, pretty, put his signs.
I, um, this is the first time I've heard of this, but, uh, I think I know who the individual is that is doing these tag sales. He's down that alleyway there by, uh, eight, ten Depot Street?
That's correct.
So I will go talk to him.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
I'm just concerned if people see one going on, this gentleman, um, he might not have been aware that the town had voted to not allow tag sales through the COVID nineteen, uh, period, and I just fear if people see a sign, they're gonna start saying, well, if this gentleman or this person can do it, why can't I?
Yeah, I, I saw the sign on the pole by the bank, uh, actually, by St. John's office, I did see that sign, and I was suspecting that it was that gentleman that was doing the tag sale, but what he does is he advertises online, I believe, and so if you notice, it just says, "Tag sale", and then he tells people to follow those signs, so I believe I know who it is, I think I can take care of that.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Well, thank you, Mark.
Okay. That brings us to the review and approval of the July twenty-twenty budget, um, there, the budget subcommittee did review, uh, the budget with, uh, county accountant, who is on the call, um, Joe called into that meeting, uh, as well, so there are a couple of us who have seen or heard, yeah, go right ahead, the July twenty-twenty budget, but Mary, I'm gonna turn things over to you, just know that, um, Jay has stepped out of the room.
Okay.
He had to take a phone call, so, uh, I think he's wanting to introduce this, but I'm gonna leave it up to you to do so.
Okay, the Department of Revenue has mandated that we must raise one-twelfth of the entire, uh, tax recap amount from the fiscal twenty-twenty budget, which was sixty million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, one-twelfth of which is one million, three ninety-four, eight ninety-one, and so, we have expenses in July that are higher than other months, we have debt service payments, we have a lot of insurance payments, and we've appropriated everything that every department head feels they need, we've appropriated personal services for all the departments that need it, including the possible, um, reopening of the library, um, an assistant for the treasurer's office, et cetera, and we present that here. We originally presented to the budget subcommittee, um, a reserve account on this budget, but I got an email from the Department of Revenue today that they will not approve a reserve account of any kind, and so we took it out. Any questions? It's way more than we need to appropriate, we are definitely counseling every department head that they are not to spend all this money. Um, the budget subcommittee recommended that we try to make a ten to fifteen percent cut in the one-twelfth budget, which is very wise counsel, because we're probably going to have to make a ten to fifteen percent cut in the budget at the end of the day, when the Department of Revenue decides to cut our state aid, um, but we can't do that now. We'll all be very careful, and it's in front of you for questions.
Thanks. Go ahead, John.
Okay, so Mary, I got a question regards to the school budgets, um, because we pay the schools on a quarterly basis, um, and you've been in contact with the Department of Revenue and other governmental departments of the state, um, following up on all of the regulations and the rules that have been forward because of this crisis, um, for the first month of July, um, we will not be putting aside funding for the schools, because we have other, um, line items that are paid for the full year in the month of July, um, so we, and the discussion at the budget subcommittee was to, um, for the months of August and September, to, um, to put aside funding for, uh, the Housick Valley Regional School District, and the, uh, Northern Berkshire, uh, Regional School District, the Can, Technical High School, um, to make up for the quarter in, well, maybe in the three months of, uh, August, September, and October, is that, is that still the plan?
That is the plan, yes, that's correct.
And, and have you heard of any other communities that, that have done it this way, and they have that, because the Department of Revenue, as you have said, is really going through these, uh, budgets from the community, the one-twelfth budgets, um, really taking a good look at these, and they are rejecting, and some of the communities in the first county had the budgets rejected the first time through, um, so, um, is any other, have you heard discussion on, uh, other communities doing the same type of thing, or?
Yes, other communities are doing the same type of thing, and, uh, most of the budgets have been rejected because they were below the one-twelfth amount.
Okay. When they say one-twelve, they mean one-twelve?
They're not a penny?
Oh, they do.
And this amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one will be the same amount for, um, each month until, uh, the, uh, state government, uh, provides, um, funding, um, that is, uh, you know, that is official, and not just, uh, um, the unknowns which we are dealing with today.
Correct.
Other questions for me? Other questions for Mary?
Uh, yes, I would just like to thank you, Mary, for, uh, doing this. As I mentioned, uh, when we had our telephone, uh, meeting, I'm not astute on this type of thing, but I do realize that we have to really penny pinch because, uh, that's what a 1/12 budget, uh, makes us have to do. But I have just one quick question. I know that, uh, come, uh, July 1st, uh, this year, we're gonna have, uh, the general fund was okayed, uh, by the Department of Revenue, and that gives us, I believe, if I'm reading this right,
Oh, free cash, yes.
Beg your pardon?
You mean free cash?
Free cash, right, yeah. Well, they call it the general fund also, free cash. Um, now, how does that play into the equation? Are we able to, uh, uh, dive into that should we need it, or is that put aside until after, um, all the figures come in from the state?
That, that'll be put aside till all the figures come in from the state. They've allowed us to do a carryover of it.
Okay, because it has been certified by the state. Um, the commissioner's, you know, so it's official, but it will have to be just held in hot until, uh, we get all of our figures in?
Uh, no, it's carryover automatically. We don't have to do anything else. We'll be able to use it if we, when we have a town meeting in the fall.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your hard work.
Thanks, Joe. You're welcome.
John, do you have another comment?
Well, Tom, Mr. Have anything to add before we?
No, just as I've been saying all along, there's, there's not many aspects of municipal government over the last 90 days that hasn't been somehow affected by the overall pandemic. And I think it's important for everyone to know that the staff is working here at Town Hall through these issues, and even on shortened hours would support that. So there's been a lot of midnight, uh, lights burning in a variety of offices in order to keep the town moving. And, uh, things are moving even at the last minute. As Mary May told you, this budget was refined earlier today, simply because new guidance came out from the Department of Revenue. Uh, you see Mark and Jerry, who are working around the clock to try to process, uh, a layer of inspections that normally they would not do under normal circumstances. So, um, I just want to thank Mary, like to thank Jerry, like to thank Mark and the entire staff and team here at, uh, the Town of Adams for everything that they're doing, uh, to keep us going.
We'll also mention that the town clerk is sitting patiently on the call this evening because once, uh, the budget is approved, she does need to certify it before it's sent off to DOR. So make sure people knew the healing.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion, um, to rule the July, um, it says here, the July 2020, uh, 1/12 budget for the Town of Adams at $1,394,891.
I have a motion by John. Okay, second by Jim.
And what this is based on is the current fiscal year budget we're, we're currently operating in is the basis that was used along with the, uh, regulations from the state to develop this budget. It's a, uh, a minimal budget just to keep the talent operating. Uh, the talent has been, because of the, uh, the COVID virus, has been operating at a reduced, uh, hours for our town buildings and services. Um, and we've also taken many precautions, uh, up to this point. So this is a, a, uh, a minimal budget just to keep the town moving, uh, by month to month.
Any other comment? Oh, Jeff, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm. So it's 1.3, $1,394,891?
Correct.
And there is no money earmarked in there for the Can or Hoochick Valley?
Correct.
And the money that would generally, the money that would have been earmarked, so to speak, is gonna be used possibly to pay some lump sum, some insurance payments. Is that what I was hearing?
No, not.
Yes. Yes.
Very simplified. There's nothing in there yet because that bill's not due until September. And we don't know what that bill will be. So the school district is also on a month-to-month budget as well. So DESI has to approve their 1/12 budget, and then when we get our invoice for September, it'll be based on that. So all of that will have to be reconciled, and then we build our fiscal 21 budget. Once we get our cherry sheet numbers, and we go from there. It's an entirely, and Mary's defied, correct, I misspeak, but this is an entirely different paradigm from how we would normally build a, build a budget.
Absolutely. This is 100% deficit spending.
So am I to understand that the hope is of the understanding that by September 1st, we will have that town meeting? So once that first, well, hopefully, we could have that town meeting. Once that first quarterly bill comes due, we won't be on a 1/12 diet anymore. Because it would be my understanding, we wouldn't be able to raise the funds to pay their one quarterly bill if you don't.
We don't have a budget approved.
Mm-hmm.
They don't have a budget, so there's no way to do it at this time. It has to be, the process has to restart, just like our budget process has to restart. So for example, the state government will send out a new cherry sheet. The school district will look at that cherry sheet. They'll make their new budget. Municipal government will look at our cherry sheet, make our new budget. We'll meet again like we did, go through the process of deciding if we have to make any cuts based on any potential state aid reduction, assemble that budget, and go through the process again with town meeting. Once the town meeting approves the budget, that's the final decision for both of those school districts. But there's nothing to, to, they have no numbers for us to budget against. I guess that's probably, Mary, that's probably the best way to say that.
Sounds good to me, yep.
It's, it's in limbo, man. And for municipal accounting process is usually very black and white. This is very challenging to deal with. Oh, no, no, I just wanted to.
Appreciate the question for certification.
Are you all set, Joe? Anything else? You good?
Okay. Okay, thank you. So I do have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No one is standing? Excellent. So before you leave this evening, I do ask that you sign the budget, um, so that that can be certified first thing in the morning and sent off. So I will leave that here. Um, that brings us to department report. Town Administrator?
So just a, a quick update on how we're trying to reopen some town services, creating a, a balance between public safety and health, as well as providing public services. Uh, the Council on Aging has submitted a plan, uh, to my office to resume limited operations, uh, with a target date of June 29th. We're continuing to work through those, uh, plans with code enforcement, but I would hope by next Wednesday to have that finalized for Council on Aging operations. I thank Erica, uh, Jorgensen, our director, for doing that. Same thing with our library. Uh, Holly Jacob has put together a reservation system plan, uh, for local collection access only, no interlibrary loan. Uh, she's looking at a target date for June 24th. I should keep in mind with everybody that this is more than just reopening town operations to provide services. Each time that we do that, if there's a cost associated with it. So not only are we trying to balance, uh, these operations within our monthly 1/12 budget, we're also keeping an eye on what the impact is to a potential fiscal 21 budget down the road. So we're being very conservative in terms of how we're reopening buildings, uh, and what staff we're bringing back from for those staff. So I am pleased to report, and I thank Holly, uh, as well for that. Another piece of housekeeping information, as you may recall, several months ago, or as Joe said, it may have been longer than that time it's flying, uh, we had determined that we were gonna bring a payroll service onboard. Uh, that would provide for more efficiency, better accounting, with time and attendance as well. We have rolled that out this week, so we're in the process of implementing that townwide with all of our offices. I'd like to thank again Mary and Ashley Satko, our new financial assistant, for spearheading that. But each department, um, is dealing with that now. So in the middle of the health pandemic, uh, they are dealing with also a new payroll and accounting system. So I thank everyone for their patience there. Uh, we have some projects to make announcements on this evening. The first is the Ashley Wiltock Rail Trail Project, Rehabilitation Project, which is a MAP DOT project. Uh, that is due, uh, for moving up here in the northern section, June 29th. That is the target date. That may change based on weather. Our Route 8 project, Commercial Street project, which is also another state project through the MPO, uh, I was told that is now up for bid. So that is moving ahead. I'm pleased to announce that Maximilian, uh, construction has been awarded the Grant Street Drainage Project, a $1.3 million dollar project. Signed those contracts today. And also, uh, Mr. Tober participated in a pre-construction meeting for the Grove Street Bridge project, which is essentially a repair and replacement of the railings, uh, along the Grove Street Bridge, which is also a MAP DOT project. So, um, I am too a constant, uh, champion for making sure that we get state funds here in our picturesque Town of Adams. And we're still looking to try to get more money, but that's, uh, three, basically three DOT projects, uh, going on here in Adams along the summer. So we'd like to thank our partners at, at DOT for it. You've heard a lot of information about the budget. You've heard a lot of information about inspectional services. And I just again want to thank everybody at Town Hall for, um, their assistance in trying to keep us moving, um, as we try to find some semblance of normalcy. That's all I have.
Any questions for the Town Administrator?
Well.
Sure, go ahead.
The 1/12 budget, which is based off of
Just a little.
the previous years.
Right.
We didn't have an accounting firm or payroll firm. Is that in the budget?
It's in there. It's only $2,000 more than what we were paying before. The details of that are, and Mary, if you're still on the phone, you can jump in. She left. The munis system had certain modules within it. Munis is our computer accounting system. When you, we retired those modules, the payroll system only cost us $2,000 more, and that's built into the 1/12 budget. It's not a problem. We were gonna delay, but it's easier to rule it out for fiscal year. And with Ashley in that office, she was willing to take it on. And Mary has so much knowledge that they, they've been, we were on conference calls this past week rolling it out. We, we wanted to do this. So we, we got it done, even in the midst of this. We pushed through to do it. There, there's a lot. I can't stress that enough. We have a lot going on. And we've tried, um, not to stop. We've tried to keep moving forward, and, uh, everyone's really, really pitching in. And it's been stressful, uh, but we're, we're doing it.
Anything else for Town Administrator?
Yep. I've, uh, struck a cordial, um, tone with, uh, Robert, and, um, I was in the office, uh, a few days ago, and, um, he got talking about the Grove Street Bridge, and he said, um, that there's, uh, problems there. There's a lot of lead paint that's on the bridge that's gonna need to be removed. Um, and that he had heard, and perhaps you have, that this will take an extended period of time, and that it's our obligation, the town, to have people directing traffic there. And that will be very, very costly, as he mentioned to me. And he had a very insightful idea. I know on Route 2, when they had Irene and, uh, the bridges were all washed away, they had those, uh, stop signs, the automatic, uh, street signs that are triggered by cars to allow them to go. So that would be something that I thought was a good idea to look into that, because if that, that bridge is gonna take a long time to be done, instead of, uh, having to pay, uh, you know, the going rate for people to say, come on, one way and another. So that will take two people perhaps to do that. So.
So he mentioned that in his note to me, the conference call, the final conference call was, uh, yesterday, excuse me, it was Tuesday. I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it, but he did mention that to me in the note. So we have a, a conference call where we talk about that.
Yep, because, uh, that will cost, uh, so much. I don't understand why we have to pay for that. Um, I just thought, a lot of times when you see Verizon or any other group, uh, company doing something, they're paying the people that are directing traffic. But.
I've never seen those contracts, Joe, so I'm not sure how that was negotiated. I don't know. John, you know if that went through the MPO?
Um, well, we've been talking about that project, and, and the details have not, we have not talked about the details, but we have a meeting on Tuesday, Joe.
Yep.
So, uh, please remind me or remind the Town Administrator, and I'll pitch her that information. At least I'll, I'll ask these questions as soon as I have one.
Yeah, because, um, once again, I thought that was, uh, thinking out of the box because it, it's gonna take an awful long time to do it, and, uh, you know, a lot of, uh, money to get rid of, uh, lead paint. It's something you, you know, you just can't go and, uh, sandblast it without having everything covered and so on and so forth, but.
It's scheduled to be a six-month job.
Yeah.
And the only thing I can think of, based on my previous experience, is that there has to be some formal town commitment to it, which probably was why it was agreed to at the time to be traffic controlled, but we'll have to dig into that further, particularly if it's beyond what had been anticipated, yeah, before.
Unfortunately, with those, the lights you're talking about, they're not smart lights. You don't care, no car's sitting there, and it's gonna keep these cars stopped until, so that may create a lot of traffic issues.
Well, I don't know, um, then if you think it'd be more advantageous to, uh, have, uh, people there with the prevailing rate of, I don't know, what is it, 60 bucks or something for six months, then vote for it. That's all I can tell you right.
Well, it depends on the type of lane closure. To Joe's point, if it's a permanent lane closure with Jersey barriers, so that there's a work zone, then the lights are probably going to work because you can't afford to have a traffic control officer there around the clock with one lane. But I, I haven't had any readings on, on this project. I do it within the works. Uh, I wanted to attend that meeting, but not because of other issues. So I'll find out from Robert and then John, if he could, through the MPO, schedule the more detail.
Yeah, well, I was pushing for it, uh, because, uh, the entrance to our community from the south, the, um, railings are all rusted away, except for the couple that they've replaced. And I, I would think they would replace those railings. Um, so, but I'll give some more information on that.
That's a cost that I'm not quite sure how it was supposed to be budgeted.
Yeah, we just, we get in, we get the budgeted number, but we haven't gone into a lot of detail, because I just assumed that, I guess I shouldn't be too late, so I'll, I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Town Administrator? All right, very none. We move on to Town Council's report. Everyone should have a copy of this in front of them. Um, but Ed, if you want to walk us through that?
Okay, uh, the first item is, uh, I appeared before the Massachusetts Appeals Court for oral argument in the Gaines case on June 4th. I participated in discussions concerning a public records request and an open meeting law complaint. And I was asked to research the existence of a noise bylaw in Adams, and I provided a response concerning its existence.
Any questions for Town Council about his report? Very none. Thank you very much, Ed.
You're welcome.
Okay. That brings us to Subcommittee and Liaison Report. Camera's closed this way, so John, I'm gonna start with you.
Um, just to get to reiterate that, we have a Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting on Tuesday, and I will, uh, ask, uh, the questions on the Grove Street Bridge that Joe always brought up. And, um, the, the way the project is out to bid, uh, we've been told that. Uh, but anything else, I'll bring back to the board. And I think that's it, really. Not, not a lot of meetings happening, so.
You did also attend a Budget Subcommittee meeting to review the July budget.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, during that meeting, um, the town staff understand the situation we're in, and there were, there's some difficult decisions that needed to be made. And, you know, they, they made some decisions there, and they had some input that was very innovative. Um, and we listened, uh, we don't make those decisions, but, um, I, I appreciate what the town employees, um, the suggestions that they had during that meeting, and then it seems like they're, they're in the right frame of mind and trying to do what's best for the town and the situation we're in, so.
Thank you, John. I will move on to Jim. Subcommittee meeting then.
I attended the Versus Sulloway District meeting. We, we reviewed the contract. We're sending it to Cresswell Consulting, who presented, we do it all, so we sign it, just find your contract. We wanna.
We're sending it to Cessor Consulting to review it all, so we can sign it, justify our contract. We want to make sure we've got our rights on it.
Hey, Melvin, this is Sarah Nick myself, and Mike Canales to discuss the Charm program for North Adams. It looks like this program is starting to move forward nicely. It's going to be a win-win situation for Adams, the Dury Bursary Solid Waste District and Adams, and, and North Adams rather. But one of those going to trade off education for the green keys in the schools or the use of their transfer station. With, with the Charm program, we will do away with bulky waste collections within the district. We will take our stuff to North Adams. There's going to be fees like with bulky waste, obviously. I haven't gotten fees for like fires or mattresses or whatever. They're, they're very minimal. But that's, that's all the information I have on that. We're going to have another meeting actually next week on this, to keep it moving forward.
So through the chair, just for the audience, so you did the add collections, bulky waste collection committee. And both North Adams has, how many do they?
We're going to, we're going to receive one, one, we're going to be able to go to the transfer station, North Adams, once a month.
Once a month.
Every once, one, one, he's looking into a one zero Saturday during the month. And if the volume is large enough, we'll probably get two days. And, and you don't have to have a sticker per se. All you have to do is prove that you're a member of the Northern Bursary Solid Waste District. Which if you're Addis, Savoy, whatever, they're in the district. So you just, you can just go.
So all school discussion, no?
It's pretty much solidified. It's not totally there yet, but it's, it's going to happen. And it's going to stay a rest of a lot of time and money.
If I may, Jim, does that affect brush?
Yes. They're going to be taking brush there.
So does that mean that we could, we can stop when this goes into place and it's official, stop taking brush? Not yard waste. We can still, if yard waste isn't a problem for us, leaves, debris, mulch, that's not a problem. Brush is what it costs us to dispose of.
I believe so. I'd have to check with Mike Canales at our next meeting to be sure on that. But I'm quite sure that, that will be handled. Obviously not stashing the boys going up with a truck full of trees or whatever. I'm sure that's not going to work.
Well, that can't work for us either because it's only residential. So would you please have some of that contact?
Yep. The food truck last week was a great success. Again, it was very busy. People, the volunteers are doing a fantastic job. And I can't say enough. Banners for fallen heroes are in the final stages. We got our last proof and we're ready to roll. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jim. Great.
I'll head home then.
Joe.
I was just wondering, do we have to add on this application for the zoning board of appeals, Jim Duda?
We did. He was listed on the appointment.
Okay, so we didn't, as a selectman, we didn't have to okay it. It's just automatic. He put in, so he gets on?
Yep. And so, because it was a new person, we made sure that that was in your packet so that you had a little bit more information. It was the only new person on the appointment list. But we voted in mass on the appointment this evening. And Jim Duda was listed as a member of the zoning board of appeals. So that was background.
The board was there to approve that.
They approved it earlier this evening.
But it was already in the.
It was on the list. Yep. That was background information on the person.
Okay, well, I just, I don't know. Okay. I just want to say that I was appointed on the executive committee of the Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership. I'm going to be working with Hank, our professor at Williams College. Bob O'Connor, who is with E, with the environmental and energy for the state. And a woman named Wood Sander. She, we had to have a member, someone from an outside group that has been put on the board. So she represents the greater Shelburne downtown business. And also, there'll be someone appointed to serve from the federal government. But that person needs to go through congressional protocol to be appointed. So as of now, there is no one for the federal government right now, but there will be someone in the near future. And I'd like to also say that I enjoy greatly going around to people that have micro businesses and passing out applications and getting them in a pipeline for possibility of some grant funding. People were very happy that I did so. It makes me feel happy when I do something like that. Because as we all know, small business is the backbone of any community. And I'm hoping that with us being the lead community and Williamstown a bigger community, that some businesses will have the opportunity to cash in on the money that's been promised by the state. And I guess that's all that I have for reports.
Okay, great. Camera is still down that way. So Joe, if you wanted to lead us in any announcements, then go to the order.
Yeah, I have a few things. And one of them is, really irks me. And that seeing our town employees riding around to in a truck without masks on. And I've seen it a number of times. And we have been harping and harping about masks. That people, when you're in, within six feet of one another, you should be wearing a mask. And I've seen it a number of times. And it just, you know, public safety is what I think a select board is. What we have to do is protect our people. And I see with all the places that I go, the protocol being done by the general public. I haven't gone to one place without seeing somebody putting their mask on. And then when I see our town employees riding Cavalier with no masks on, that strikes a sour chord with me. It really does. And I don't know whose responsibility that is. I would think it's maybe the operations specialist. Tell the guys before you go out in the morning, have your masks and wear them. I just.
So are you indicating it's the Department of Public Works?
Yes, correct.
So we can ask the DPW director, Robert Tober, to send out a communication reminding the employees.
Well, I don't want to, yeah, I, I don't want to put it on his back because he's not down there in the morning when the crews are going out. So your operations specialist, who are paying a pretty good amount of money, should tell the guys, get your mask and put them on.
The request will go to the DPW director.
Okay, very good. As long as somebody hears about it.
Yep.
And also, a couple other things. I asked about, I don't know, quite a long time ago, about getting the people that did our audit and have them come in and talk to us about our audit to see if we can do things better, if we're doing things all right as it stands. Every year since I've been a selectman, we've had people come in after an audit and they talk to us about the fiscal health of our community and the way that we're doing things. So I would like, if we could have somebody who did our audit come in and speak to us and the public.
You referenced that in February. I asked the town accountant and then COVID hit and so things have stalled, but I will send the request again.
Fair enough. And also, I think Jay's been here for over a year. I think it's time for review.
Correct. And I indicated that that is something that we would be doing. And I started to put together that evaluation process. But we were all in the middle of the pandemic and the hiring and budget. So that fell on the back burner, but I will resurrect that. That falls on me, Joe.
Okay. And now a really good story. I'm so proud of Matt Kaperniac. Matt Kaperniac, a great kid, had just signed as a free agent with the St. Louis Cardinals. And that's the first person since Dale Long who was not born in Adams. And a funny story about Dale Long is the house that I live in, he ended up marrying the girl that lived there. And when I was redoing my house, I took down a wall and there was a Dale Long. He had signed his name in the petition. And Matt Kaperniac, we should all be proud of him. He's not just a great athlete. He's a very great person. He's a very nice person. And I just wish him well. And, and that's quite an accomplishment, regardless of how it materializes in the future. But to get drafted as a free agent, particularly in a time as COVID nineteen, when, you know, baseball is just questionable when we're even going to have it. But congratulations to Matt and his family.
Thanks, Joe. Chris.
Hi, Melvin.
Jim.
Hi, Melvin.
John?
I did just want to make an announcement as we were reviewing the reappointments for this year. There are some vacancies that we do still need to fill. I know that the zoning board is in need of individuals. We have two alternate positions that are currently vacant. And we have Dave Ryan Miller, who is still filling out a temporary appointment to the zoning board. So that is a board that we desperately need to find some qualified and interested individuals. The other item was the agricultural commission. It's a very large commission. And we only have two members. So it's my understanding that they can't actually meet because they can't meet the form requirements for that commission. Joe, I know you've had some experience with the agricultural commission in the past. I was wondering if maybe you could spend some time.
I, I said it in the past that I was going to try to get it resurrected. I've had, I've made some calls, but it's, as you stated, it's on the back burner. I've got to go with other things, but I can ask around. It's a very important commission.
Can you let me know a, a date that you might want to present some information to this board about the agricultural commission? And maybe a way that we can reduce the number of members so that the forum factor is a little bit better?
I'm not aware. How many members are?
I, I think, nine or eight. Yep, there's nine.
Yeah, but some I think were alternates though. I don't think the full slate was it all. Nine members? I don't remember it being that. I remember it maybe being, seven at the most were alternates.
It is five permanent and four alternate. Apparently there are only two members in that commission. So if you could maybe look into that and, and we can have a conversation about this board as to how we can help resurrect that.
Yep.
That would be great. So let me know when you'd be comfortable to present that to this group.
Anytime.
Okay. Well, I don't want to put it on for next week, but, you know, I want to give you some time to do that.
I'm sure we'll get to the charm and bylaw. Bylaw possible change, town meetings to reduce the number of members.
And that's what I, I don't know if it's, you know, and that's something, you know, Joe, you want to work with Ed to find out if, how we would be able to reduce that. That might be good information for us to have.
There's money to be had through grants if you have an agricultural commission.
Exactly. Exactly. That's all I have right now for announcements and good of the orders. So with that, I would just remind folks that we will have a meeting next Wednesday. And we don't have the time. We could do it at six P.M., but I was just, I wanted to double check with schedules before we set the time. But we will meet at Wednesday. With that.
I'll keep you informed.
I have much more. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. For those of you who hung out all night.